I'd like to call this session of the Planning Commission for the City of Wheat Ridge to order. We have a roll call of the members, please.
Ann Brintman.
Present.
Alan Buffnum.
Present.
Mark Dietrich is absent this evening. Tracy Gildner is absent. Dick Matthews.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Steve Timms.
Here. Now, can you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberatory, and justice
The next item on the agenda is to approve the order of the agenda.
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second. Call for the vote, please.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Next item is the approval of the minutes from June 16th.
I move for approval of the minutes of the June 16, 2011 meeting.
I second. And by the way, Ann, again, very nice, nice work writing them up. I sound a lot better when you write it up than I do up here. Thank you.
Okay. Call for a vote, please.
And that motion passes with Commissioner Pond abstaining.
Next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. If you're here to speak on the case regarding the parcel across the street, WZ-1104, we'll be getting to that in a minute. Okay, I don't see.
There were people signed up, but we ran out of room on the public hearing sign-up sheet, so it's my belief that they all mean to speak for that instead of public forum.
Okay. Great. All right. We'll get to the public hearings. Public hearing tonight, the only case we've got, is case number WZ-1104, an application filed by David Myers for Metro Community Provider Network for approval of a specific outlined development plan for properties owned planned commercial development, PCD, and located at 7495 West 29th Avenue. Do we have something from the city? Meredith.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Recker, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and with me this evening at the staff table is Tim Peranto, who is the Director of Public Works, and he'd be happy to answer questions on traffic and drainage if you have some. Before we get started, I do have some correspondence that I omitted from the packet. These were letters that were received in relationship right around the time we had the neighborhood meeting, so I wanted to enter those into the record formally and let you take a look at those before we get started.
Thank you.
Let's see. Case number WZ-1104 is a request for approval of a planned commercial development, specific outline development plan, and property located at 7495 West 29th Avenue. The intent of this application is to facilitate construction of an approximate 46,000 square foot medical clinic. The new clinic will offer medical, dental, and mental health services. I'd like to enter into the record the zoning code, comprehensive plan, case file, and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property has been posted and notified, therefore jurisdiction has been established for the Planning Commission. Okay, this first slide is taken, it's an aerial of the site, it's a fairly recent one, I believe it's dated 2011. The property is zone planned commercial development, you can see it outlined in red. We've got 29th Avenue here down at the south with Wadsworth running up the western boundary, right-of-way to 430th Avenue at this location, and the, what I call, the internal corner of the intersection of 30th Avenue and Webster, right at that very northeast corner of the site. There is an un-half-built right-of-way, 25 feet in width, that runs along that northern property line. It has been dedicated, but not built. The site is currently vacant, with the exception of a wellhouse on the western portion, and what remains of the commercial parking lot. There are about four dozen trees that are scattered throughout the site, they vary in species and health, and there is a fence and landscape buffer that separates the property from the row of residential homes along Webster to the east. This is a picture of the zoning map. Again, the property is outlined in red. It does have PCD zoning with primarily low-density residential zoning and land use around it to the north. This sort of yellowy, yellowy color designates R2. This beige-y color is R1A, and then to the south is R2 as well. Both of these areas to the north and the east are primarily low-density residential, single-family mostly, and then some duplexes mixed in. To the south is where we are tonight, it's the municipal building located on City-owned property, which also has Hayward Park. And then across the street, the portion that is, does not have the zoning overlay, designates Jefferson County ownership divided by Wadsworth, and it is the Olinger Crown Hill Marchory and Cemetery. Just to go briefly through some history of the site, the property was originally rezoned in 2006. At that time, all the existing structures were on the property, and the zone change was heavily conditioned relative to different use areas on the property, and also the maintenance of some of those old structures. This is the first page of that ODP approved in 2005, which is the declaration page. This was the second page of that plan set. It's what we would call a bubble diagram, shows the property and some general use areas, access points, but not really a whole lot of detail. In 2008, we had another zoning application come in. This was for a different type of commercial development on the property, zoning was still PCD, but this particular approval was to facilitate construction of a specific restaurant with some retail and office uses. This was the first page, again, of that 2008 plan set. This was the second page, which is a more defined site plan. You can see it's actually got lot layout, and parking areas, and landscaping, and so on, so quite a bit more information than the 2005 approval. And then the elevation sheet was very detailed as far as the specific user. This was a restaurant, it was going to be a custom-designed restaurant, designed build for an Italian restaurant on the north side of the parcel. Obviously, that has never, never come to fruition, and in addition to that, because some of the conditions were removed regarding those existing structures, most of those existing buildings were demolished on the property by the owners. So let's see what it looks like today. This first slide is, I'm standing at the entrance to City Hall, this is 29th Avenue running right along here. This is the existing entrance to the property, which is pushed up against that row of residential homes. So moving to the west, again, standing on City Hall property, you can see some of those existing blue spruce trees on the site. And then also, again, still looking north towards the property off 29th, towards Wadsworth. This is, now I'm on the north side of the property, looking west, this is the intersection, where you see the lights, of 29th and Wadsworth, this is the 29th Avenue frontage. Okay, now I'm in the interior of the site. There's not a lot of points of reference, but I did want to point out, this is that existing wellhouse that the applicant would like to build around. The cars in the background are located on Wadsworth, and this is looking sort of southwest. Now I'm looking the other way, this is Wadsworth over here on the left-hand side. Again, you can see that wellhouse. Part of the reason I included this picture was because upon future development, this wellhouse is in the path of the 10-foot-wide pedestrian path that staff is requiring, and I just wanted to point that out to you. We're going to work around it, sounds like. Looking south again, City Hall is off in the distance. This is more looking southeast towards sort of the existing mature trees that buffer the site from those existing residential units. Now I'm standing on the very north end of the site. This was the, this paved area was the original driveway for the little farmhouse that was on the site, but the reason I'm standing here is you can see 30th Avenue in the background, this is Webster over here, and we are asking for construction of that street, so this is that view, this is probably where that right-of-way is located, the existing. And now I'm standing at the corner of 30th and Webster, looking back the other way, so this is 30th, or down here, and this is where it intersects Webster Street. So what they are requesting tonight is approval of a specific ODP for planned commercial development. It is a totally different development scenario than the last two zone, zoning approvals we've gone through. It is for construction of a very specific prototype of a medical clinic, about 46,000 square feet in size. The specific ODP, while it provides a lot of information as far as the site plan and architectural details, we also have to go through and kind of establish the allowed uses. And so this first page is what I would call the declaration page, it's got on it legal description and all the signature blocks, but it also lays out all the allowed uses in this column here, and then as you move over into the document to the right, it talks about development standards. The list of uses was taken from the C1 Zone District Standards. C1 is a fairly open retail office, commercial type of zoning in the city, and it's very prevalent, but we've gone ahead and they've taken, we've taken out certain of those uses that we didn't think were compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. Those would include things like auto sales and service, fast-food restaurants, gas stations, and so on. And this list they're showing tonight is basically the same as what was on both the 2005 and the 2008 plan. We also have to establish minimum design standards for the development, things like landscaping, building height, amount of hard surface coverage, and so on, and so that takes us a little further into the document. And the next thing I'm showing you is a table that show, this was in your staff report, and what it does is it shows those particular development standards, what are established on this document, and then what's being met by the actual design itself. So if you look towards the top of that, there's three columns. Number one is the development standard, I call it item, doesn't sound exactly right, but it's the particular development standard we're talking about, the requirement noted on the first page, under establishment of those guidelines, and then what's provided on the site plan. And as you move down, down the columns, you can see that, for example, the maximum building and hard surface coverage area is at 80% required, and they're at 65% of the net site area. They've established setbacks in the next column, 30 feet from both Wadsworth and 29th, 25 feet from 30th, and 20 feet from the eastern property line, and if you look in that next column where it reflects what's actually on the site plan, you can see that they exceed all those standards, and so on and so forth. 20% maximum lands, or minimum landscape coverage, they're providing 35%, and so on and so forth. This is the second page of the plan set, it's really the heart and soul of the development plan, and it is the specific site plan they're requesting approval of. Just to help orient you a little bit, north is actually to the left, so the 30th Avenue right-of-way is located up here on the left side of the screen, Wadsworth down here on the bottom, and 29th Avenue over on the right. You can see the existing structure and the access points and the parking layout. Again, the minimum standard set by the development is 20% landscaping, with this plan, they're showing 35%. There would be some buffering along that eastern property line by a six-foot-high solid wall in combination with landscaping. There's going to be a detention pond that runs basically down that eastern property line into a pond in this location right here, at the very southeast corner of the site. Public Works has reviewed a drainage report, and has been working with the applicant to tweak the pond design so it meets all the standards. Again, the building is located sort of at the southern portion of the site. You can see the proposed parking areas. This one down here on the south is the staff parking with the secondary access. The majority of the rest of the parking is for clients and patients, and the main entrance is at this location right here. They have provided handicapped accessible spots, and also bike parking at the entrance into the building. There's currently two existing curb cuts, well, actually, there's three. There's one on 29th Avenue, and there's actually two on Wadsworth currently existing today that facilitated use of the property through all the various phases it was used. The proposed 29th Avenue access will be located opposite of the entranceway into City Hall so that we don't have conflicting turning movements, and one departure from what the original plan, two plans showed is there was no access to 30th Avenue. All of the access into the site, in addition to 29th Avenue, was from Wadsworth. And with this plan, on advice from staff, the applicant is showing 30th Avenue punched through from Webster over to Wadsworth, and access from Webster Street. We did this for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's been a goal of City Council to try to encourage pedestrian connections, and to facilitate a grid-street system. Also, we think it's probably a safer and maybe a cheaper option for them, instead of constructing curb gutter and sidewalk all the way down to Wadsworth frontage. And I do have a map I'd like to show you, just to talk a little bit more about this pedestrian system we're talking about. Again, the site is located in this area right here, 29th Avenue is to the south, right here. We've got Wadsworth on the western side, and then 30th Avenue, how it exists today. You can see you've got a pretty good street system with Uppam coming up from 29th and connecting with 30th. Vance and Webster do that as well, and then you can continue going north to 32nd Avenue. Well, we are suggesting, because we've got half of the right-of-way already for 30th adjacent to the site, that this additional 25 feet be dedicated with the project and built to make this connection to Wadsworth. There would be a pedestrian connection for those folks who are going to walk from the neighborhood for the services, to be able to get into the site, and I'm sure there will be some discussion about that later. Moving back to the site plan, just a few more things of note. Public Works has determined that we need 50 feet of additional right-of-way for Wadsworth. With this plan, there will be a 20-foot dedication at the time they plat, and then a 30-foot reservation behind that for future widening of the street. They will be required to build a 10-foot-wide separated multi-use path with landscaping, streetscape elements, including the installation of street trees, and so on and so forth. There's an existing RTD access, bus shelter right here, and it is going to be reconstructed a little bit further north along Wadsworth. Let's see what else. I did mention the existing wellhouse, and let me see if I can find it on the plan. It's right where the meander is. Here's the wellhouse right here, and if you look at the way that aligns with the proposed multi-use path, you know, it would go right through the middle of it, it would obviously have to be removed and a new well dug, and the applicant has decided that they would like to try to keep that. So they are showing a meander of that path to the west, and staff does support that. If they went to the east, they would lose parking, and we believe it would be a cost savings for them, and it kind of helps with the designing, maintains some of that remnant of the infrastructure and the old buildings on the property. 29th Avenue is going to also have improvements completed to it, we believe there's about six feet of additional right-of-way that will be required to accommodate those improvements. And I would note that all of the design shown for the three streets we're looking at tonight do meet the newly adopted streetscape standards. This is the third sheet of the development plan, it's the architectural elevations for the proposed building. It will be two and a half stories in height with a garden-level area on the southeast corner. Proposed materials include integrally colored concrete block, metal and concrete panels, and stucco around the eastern entrance. They are providing foresighted architecture with wall plane changes and facade articulation, and staff has concluded that they meet the standards, the standards of the Architectural and Site Design Manual have been met, except for transparency. The manual calls for between 60 and 85% transparency on any publicly viewed facade, and at no time can that percentage of transparency dip below 30%. The proposed transparency that they are, have included into their design is 28% on the north elevation, 37% on the south-facing elevation, which is the West 29th Avenue view, 40% on the west, the Wadsworth side, and 43 on the east-facing elevation. We know now, after we wrote the manual and started using it, that it was really, this transparency requirement was really more appropriate for a retail context. We've talked about that quite a bit at length, and the applicant is indicating that because of the way the internal operations will need to be functioning, and also for patient privacy, that this is the maximum they can get with this plan. The facade that's most visible by patients and patrons to the building would be on the east side, and that's at 40%. Staff is okay with the reduction of transparency, just because they've met and exceeded the other standards, as far as facade articulation reveals, and so on. This is the final page of the plan set, it is the isometric perspective of the building, just to give you an idea how it will relate to the neighborhood. The orientation is basically from the northeast corner, this is 29th Avenue down here, Wadsworth at this location, and then on the north is 30th, building location in here, and you can see how it would relate to the residential neighborhood with the grid-street system, and so on. Okay, anytime we do any sort of zone change, change of conditions, any sort of zoning approval, we have to take a look at the comprehensive plan. This is a portion of the structure map, which is a document inside the comp plan that we use when we are looking at doing evaluations for land use proposals. You can see the site is located in this little brown area right here, this is Wadsworth adjacent to it, and what the Envision Wheat Ridge shows is that Wadsworth, or the property is located on Wadsworth, which is a primary commercial corridor, it's actually one of our own, one of the only major regional arterials in the city, and we recommend in the plan for redevelopment of Wadsworth with the mix of land uses and pedestrian-friendly development. The subarea plan, which was adopted in 2007, reiterates this idea that Wadsworth be redeveloped, and that pedestrian and vehicular connections be made. Agency referrals. All of the responding agencies can serve the property with improvements at the developer's expense. ConMutual, Wheat Ridge Sanitation, Wheat Ridge Fire, all indicated no problems, there would be upgrades required. CDOT has no objections to the plan, as there's no new access to Wadsworth, they actually like that connection with 30th instead of another curb cut for a commercial development on Wadsworth. Wheat Ridge Economic Development supports the proposal and concludes it meets all the guiding documents in the city, as does Wheat Ridge Long Range Planning. Public Works has reviewed the preliminary drainage and traffic. Both the legal description and drainage need some tweaks and revisions prior to going to City Council. They will require 20 feet of right-of-way for Wadsworth at the time of plating, with an additional 30 feet of reservation behind that. Also, a 25-foot right-of-way dedication for 30th, and about six feet on 29th to accommodate that turn lane. There was a neighborhood meeting held on May 24th, we had about 13 folks in attendance, and the letters that I passed out were in response to the neighborhood meeting. In regard to the zone change criteria, I'm not going into great detail, but I would like to make a few points. First of all, the current zoning is planned commercial development, it's been that way since about 2005, 2006. We also think that there's been a change of market conditions, so that both those two prior plans, which were primarily a retail type of development, the market conditions have changed, and it makes sense for this new medical use at this location. We've concluded that it's consistent with the commercial designation in both the Wadsworth Subarea Plan, also Envision Wheat Ridge, that there will be upgraded buffering with use limitations, and infrastructure improvements to help mitigate impacts to the adjacent residential neighborhood. There are economic, physical, social, and recreational benefits to the city. All agencies can serve the property, and finally, that the proposal is consistent with requirements in the Architectural and Site Design Manual. We are giving a recommendation of approval with four conditions. The first one relates to the legal description being resolved prior to first reading, the applicant continue working with Public Works on the drainage design, that materials and colors be added to, I believe it's sheet three, of the architectural elevations in the plan set. And then finally, on sheet four, which is the isometric perspective, that detached sidewalk be shown for the entirety of West 29th Avenue. That does conclude the staff comments, and I would be happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Meredith. Do we have questions from the commission? Ann.
Meredith, was it the city's idea, or the applicant's idea, to put through the street?
The city staff.
Okay.
The original plan they showed us had access from 29th and Wadsworth, and we requested that they modify it to show the 30th Avenue connection and access.
So can you explain some of the thinking behind your proposal to?
Sure. Well, I mean, there's several reasons, and Tim, chime in here if you'd like to. First of all, we've got half, half of the street already dedicated, and so with that in place, and it's been there for years and years and years, it makes sense to try to extend that street through. It will help pedestrian connections, it will help traffic in the neighborhood, it eliminates another commercial access point onto Wadsworth, we'd prefer to see that access off a lesser street than Wadsworth. Anything else, Tim, you'd like to add?
Well, the main thing is that this particular development is very, I forget the term, I'm missing, I'm not thinking of the term I want to use, but it's, everything is oriented to that particular use, and so we should not have stray traffic and people coming from all around Wheat Ridge to it, it's a very.
Destination.
Destination-oriented is the word I want. So we don't see that this development is like any of the others we've had, so we, this development, we don't believe is going to create additional traffic within the neighborhood, and so there wouldn't be the impact there would have been with earlier uses of this property. We have a renewed interest by the City Council for connectivity and for multimodal transportation. As you see out in front, we're designing, and we've designed and we're constructing right now the 10-foot pedestrian and bike trail along Wadsworth. This will be another connection for the residents to get out to this new facility, that they can have access all the way over to the county park, and then we just received a grant to complete the trail down Kipling to 44th, so this would give them also connection down to the open space.
And then, were you thinking, because this will, for the first time ever, start potentially having cars go down 30th East, were you thinking of signage, some signage to say local traffic only type?
We don't believe that that's going to be warranted or needed. If it does, we can always add it.
Okay.
And the other point that I wanted to make is life safety, does provide another access in and out of these neighborhoods for police and fire.
And ambulance, et cetera?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Okay, that was it for me. Thank you.
Question from Scott.
Do we have any traffic counts for 30th?
We don't, that I'm aware of.
Of course, they're non-existent today because there is none, and they, it's residential street, and I don't recall, your traffic engineers are here, and they may be able to answer that question for you as to what their model showed as additional traffic that might go on to 30th, but I don't recall that number.
Question from Steve.
Good evening. Regarding the one half dedicated of 30th Avenue, how long approximately has that been dedicated? Do you know?
You know, my recollection, Steve, is that it came from when those properties to the north were platted, which I think were probably early 60s, and it was dedicated at that time.
Okay. And then just a general question under the, and you referenced this in your PowerPoint, one of the conditions, the number-one condition, problem with the legal description be resolved. Can you summarize what those problems are?
Well, we have very specific monumentation section breakdown using a modified state plane system that has been adopted by the city. And so they did provide us a legal, but they just need some tweaking with some of the rotation to meet the standard. And staff's comfortable with that. I mean, the legal worked for what we needed tonight, but prior to the first reading, I'd like to have that correct legal.
And then related to that, number two, the applicant working with Public Works to resolve drainage design. Can you summarize what's left on that drainage design or what the issues are surrounding that?
Yes, the drainage right now, as you see in the plan, comes to a detention pond in the southeast corner of the property. And we want to make sure that we don't create issues to downstream properties because there's very limited receiving systems along 29th Avenue. So they're in the process of doing some revisions to their system, possibly some over-dention to make sure that we protect the other residents in the neighborhood.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dick?
Yes, I'd just like to verify that I understood that the intersection of Wadsworth and 30th was going to be right turn only in, right turn only out, and that actually southbound Wadsworth would not have access?
Actually, that was for the general access into the site for the prior plan. I believe it was centered sort of in this location, and it was only right turn in and out. This is, I believe, a three-quarters movement of the new intersection.
The developer is going to seek a three-quarter with the State Department of Transportation. The city does not control whether that be allowed or not. We know that they'll allow a right-in, right-out, and you might be able to ask the applicant if they've received final word from CDOT on their application.
But they did have permission for a three-quarter access in the prior plan?
No.
No.
No?
No.
The prior plan had no, 30th didn't go through. It was just the general curb cut into the property that was right-in, right-out.
So was there any, as I look at the documents from the public meeting that was held, which are Exhibit Five in our packet, and some of the comments that you've just made, I just want to clarify a couple of the things, again, specifically related to West 30th Avenue and explanation. Was there any look at allowing access off of Wadsworth onto 30th but not making the full connection? In other words, right-in, right-out at 30th but not connecting all the way?
No. It was either Wadsworth or 30th built all the way.
Okay.
And a lot of the discussion at the neighborhood meeting, it was, of course, the extension of 30th into that neighborhood.
Other questions from other commissioners? Ann?
I'm sure we're going to hear from the applicant, but since it was the city's idea to put 30th through, and I understand the reasons, the multimodal reasons, if the applicant decides that they wish not to do that, do you think that the plan with just a right-in, right-out from the property alone is doable?
We don't support that. We want to see that connection of 30th.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. Meredith, who's going to be paying for the construction of the 30th Street extension? Is that city?
No, it's going to be paid by the applicant.
Okay.
Let me interject that the city is going to participate in the cost. We've agreed to participate in the cost of the construction of 30th because of the extra expense involved in building the full street section. So the city's going to fund approximately half of the construction of that connection.
Is there any other infrastructure, Public Works infrastructure, other than curbs and street? Is there any underground stuff that you guys are going to have to put in?
No.
Meredith, I noticed on the plan, and maybe this might be a better question for the applicant, but I'll ask it of you as well. Why is the north access from 30th aligned to the east side of the property at Webster? In other words, if you run a line straight south from Webster, that's basically where the ingress into the site's planned on being. For less neighborhood impact, would there maybe be less neighborhood impact, cars coming not as far into the neighborhood grid if the north access was moved farther to the west away from Webster?
Well, generally, it's good traffic engineering to have curb, or streets opposite each other so you don't get conflicting turning movements. But do you have any?
No, that's exactly why. It's so that we end up, we have an intersection, and this drive connection is going to be fairly busy, and so we don't want to have offset intersections and have more accidents because of that.
So you don't have somebody like, if they live in the neighborhood and they had to drive there, they're not doing like an S to try and get out of the site, onto 30th and onto Webster, say, for example?
The turning movements off of either one of them being in conflict and having an accident.
Okay, okay. One last question about transparency. I'm a little bummed that there's such a conflict between the ASDM and the sort of reality, I guess, of specifically to, I guess, medical, medical building construction. I don't know. I know it's sort of a reality that, you know, obviously, patient privacy and so forth is very important, and, you know, functionally, medical buildings have different functional requirements in terms of transparency than other developments. So I can understand the rationale. But I guess with that in mind, I would really urge the staff to revisit the ASDM to sort of codify what, you know, more realistic, minimal transparency standards for specific applications like that, so that we don't keep running into this where we say, well, the standard's, you know, 60 percent, but these guys only have 28 percent.
And I would agree wholeheartedly. That's one of the next things on our list is, you know, you never really know how good a plan is or a guiding document until you start implementing it. Steve, you're probably aware of that. And we know that when the ASDM was written, it was really for retail context. It doesn't work for industrial. It doesn't work for medical. It doesn't work for financial. So that's one of the things we're going to be taking a look at.
Any further questions, follow-up questions from the commission for staff? Okay. Thanks, Meredith. We'd like to hear from the applicant, if the applicant's here. Great. Why don't you come up, give us your name, tell us who you're with, and give us your presentation, please.
Members of the commission, good evening. My name is David Myers, and I'm the CEO of the Metro Community Provider Network, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight. I will be speaking on our organization and who we are, and then I'll invite our Vice President of Clinical Affairs, Dr. Barry Martin, to talk about the services we intend to provide at this location. And then we will invite Stacy Root from Boulder Associates to talk about the technical aspects, the design, and I think many of the questions that I heard you were interested in, perhaps she would be able to answer best. MCPN, as we're known, has been around since 1989. We call ourselves a community health center, and the emphasis is on community. We currently have 11 locations, and in every community that we're at, we build the identity for that community. So we have a clinic in Arvada, and if you go up to our Arvada clinic, the people in Arvada, the community of Arvada feels a great deal of ownership. Our Inglewood Clinic, the same. We have been in Jefferson County since 1991. We have strong partnerships with the school district, Jeffco Action Center, Family Tree, the Health Department. Lutheran Hospital was critical in our beginning and has been a longtime partner. So our roots in the community go very, very deep. Simply stated, we're a doctor's office with, I will say, a little added. So we offer dental services. We offer mental health support to people. We have a partnership with Jefferson Center for Mental Health, which we hope to deepen and build with this campus. But we are like every doctor's office that you go to, that every doctor's office you've seen, and the type of services that we provide are those kinds of services. As an organization, we're very solid. Our budget is $25 million. We are governed by a board of directors. And again, my board has given me the directive that when we go into a community, we look to build those community partnerships, which is why it pleases us to be here in Wheat Ridge. We have long served the community of Wheat Ridge. About 3% to 4% of the city's population uses us as their doctor's office, and we've been very proud of that. At this point, I would like to invite Dr. Barry Martin, our Vice President of Clinical Affairs, to talk about the services we'll be providing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Barry Martin. I'm a family physician. Been with MCPN since 1992. I see patients in Aurora, but I do have some connections to Wheat Ridge in that I'm on the board of Seniors Resource Center. So I feel a good connection to the city through that great organization. So as Dave mentioned, we're essentially a family practice office. We see patients womb to tomb, as we say, from prenatal patients all the way through adulthood, seniors. So same thing that any family practice would do. We provide prenatal care. We certainly don't provide anything like abortions or any kind of surgical procedures. And we'll also have dental services. One of the things that we believe in is, you may have heard the concept of medical home. That's a term that's going around quite a bit in healthcare circles these days. The idea that your medical provider will really have all the information about you, can coordinate all of your care, and can provide the care that you as an individual need when you need it. And that's one of the guiding principles that we use in our care. So if we see patients who need dental care as well as physical health care, as well as mental health care, we try to make sure we can give all of that in a one-stop shop. There are ways that dental is connected to medical care, for example, in delivering healthy babies. So we make sure that all of our prenatal patients have dental visits as well, so that they will be healthy and they'll produce healthy babies. Let's see. Again, this is primary care. We sometimes have volunteer specialists who will come in, sometimes paid specialists to see our patients, but it's basically what you'd find in any family practice office. Our hours are the sort of usual hours. We try to go into the early evening hours to accommodate some people who need to come in after work. We don't say open real late. What we've found over the years is that people generally don't want to come in after they've gone home and had dinner and then go back out to the doctor's office. So we don't do our hours very late, but we try to be accommodating to working people. We have not decided on any weekend hours. Currently, none of our offices have weekend hours, but we know it's a convenience to our patients, and so that might be something that we'd want to consider. But again, we're not talking late evening hours or things that I think would be disruptive to the neighbors around there. Anything else? I'll introduce Stacy Root, who's going to, one of the architects working on the plan, and she'll talk about more technical things.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Root with Boulder Associates Architects. I'm the project architect on the project, and I'll start by first just opening up this quick PowerPoint here. This is the other one. This is yours. Oh, were they both open? Yeah, come on. Yeah, there. No. Okay, you're over. Technical difficulties on the- There you go. And can we get just the slides? Yeah. How's that? Okay, great. So I'll start off just real quick looking at the site plan again, and in fact, I will answer some of the questions that were asked earlier. Regarding the 30th Street access point, we did, in fact, as Meredith said, we came to the initial pre-application meeting showing access from Wadsworth as we knew had been previously approved on the other documents that you'd seen. So we started there, but then we were advised by Public Works that in order to get staff support for the project, we would need to show 30th extending all the way through. So we've done exactly that. We have located the entrance to the property on 30th directly across from Webster Street, also at the direction of Public Works Department. I know that the applicant, MCPN, would be more than happy to shift that if, you know, if the direction changed and others decided that that would be a better decision. We'd be fine with that, of course. We would also be fine with returning to access points from Wadsworth if that's the way things went. I would say that the applicant is most interested in getting permission to build the building and begin serving patients and clients here in the city of Wheat Ridge. So there's that first, oh, how do I advance? Just, voila, all right. So and here's, we saw this earlier from Meredith. We have shown the, let's see, we've shown that sidewalk extending as also directed by Public Works. So there's that. And then lastly, I'd like to show a few color images of the project that we have in mind. This is rendering, a 3D perspective rendering that starts to hint at what some of the materials might be like, you know, sort of how that building sits on the site. One of the things that MCPN was really drawn to about the property is the fact that everyone knows it has a very nice park-like quality, and that is definitely something we aim to preserve as much as possible. And so toward that end, we had an arborist visit the site and has given us a really great report that kind of outlines the condition of all the trees, tells us what they all are, and goes through every single tree on the property, and has told us whether they recommend it come out or we make really good efforts to preserve it. So we've done exactly that as much as possible. In this rendering, you see, this is the blue, one of the blue spruces, in fact, we intend to preserve both of them that you see right directly across from this building here. So that's important to us. Also, back in this back corner is a tree that's kind of rare in Colorado. It's an American sycamore, and so we're definitely intending to keep that as well. So otherwise, this starts to get to a sense of the look and feel of the building as we see it. We have also put together some colored rendering elevations at the request of the planning department. So this sort of outlines, starts to talk about what materials go where. This would be CMU. We're looking at some metal panel in between the windows, articulated concrete board, cement board panels, cement board panels. And then again, we, toward the transparency question, we have put as much glass as makes sense where it's programmatically, you know, works for the building itself. So right here at the entrance, if you were to come in this door, this is a giant waiting room that extends all across on both floors, the first floor and the second floor. And we see that as being very transparent and having a very sort of friendly quality which faces the neighbors' opposite. So that's exactly why that's placed there. Otherwise, let's see, the other, I think the other important elevation is the Wadsworth elevation, which is the top one shown here. And again, we've put the glazing where it makes sense with what's happening inside the building. So these represent where you see a fair amount of glazing. That's the primary workspace for what MCPN calls the pods, where it's sort of, imagine, a bullpen of providers working together, and then that is ringed by exam rooms around the outside. So we want to give them lots of natural light, and we also want to have a really great presence on Wadsworth. So that's kind of the short story behind what's happening with the architecture, and I think that's about it. I do want to mention that we have the traffic engineer, the civil engineer-
Now, we'll take some questions from the commission. Dick?
Just a dumb question on the mechanics of that. Why do you not put the bullpen of providers on the exterior and put the exam rooms on the interior?
Oh, that's exactly what we've done. So, where you see the glazing on the elevation, that's, that's, if you look right inside there, that's where all the providers are. So, basically, if you imagine sort of desk workspaces, about 10 of them at each pod, and then that is ringed on the inside of the building with the exam rooms. So, I mean, it, it works best for the staff of the building as well, because obviously they get, they get great natural light, so.
Scott?
Will the reduction in transparency increase the heating and cooling efficiency?
So, this is slated to be a lead gold building. That's what we're targeting. So, you can be sure that where we do have glazing, it, it's a very high quality of glazing. In other words, it has really great solar heat gain coefficients, and, and the whole package, the whole building works together to, you know, toward that end of achieving energy efficiency and our target of lead gold.
Ann?
You may not be able to answer this. Can you go back a couple of slides to the overhead view somewhat? Not that one. That one.
Sure.
Where is the intended for snow load, for removal of snow?
I may not be able to answer that question.
Yep.
This is John Willett, the landscape architect. He can answer that question.
John Willett, landscape architect. I, I'll try to answer that question. Can I lift this up? Snow removal is a big, big deal, because primarily from my side, we lose a lot of plant material when we pile snow on top of plants. So, as we design this more, we will be pushing snow towards the end of aisles, and at the end of those aisles will be places specifically for snow. It's something that we have to work into the specifications and the maintenance manual for the, for the landscape, and it's something that's becoming more and more important to projects like this. We don't have it shown on the drawings as of yet, but that level of detail will come out in the next layer of design.
Okay. So, there is consideration for that, especially since most of that property is east-facing. The building's going to be hiding a lot of that snow, and the trees hide a lot of that, the sun gain.
Correct. And there's also a problem with black ice. As the snow piles start to melt, they bring water across parking lot areas, which can be slippery. So, those are the things that we think about when, where we put snow based on that.
Okay. You may not be able to answer this next question.
Okay. We'll talk together then.
Okay. Neither of you. Are any of the doctors allowed to overnight any cars, any RVs, trailers, any personal property on that, on that, at that location?
We don't want that to happen.
I know you don't want that to happen. Is it allowed?
Uh, we will have a policy that they can't.
Okay.
Uh, no. We, we do have security systems in all of our locations, and we don't want anything that would attract business after hours.
Okay.
So, if it assures you to have a policy that that will not happen, I will write a policy for that.
And since you raised it, I apologize, I didn't get to any of your other locations. Do you have security on site?
Yes.
Is it 24/7?
Well, we have security people on site when we're open.
Okay.
And then we have security cameras all the time.
Otherwise? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Steve?
Steve?
Just a couple of questions. Don't, don't sit down. Yeah, please. Thank you for your presentation. I do have a question about the employment for this facility. Are you proposing, are these going to be new positions that are not created within your organization? Are these going to be transferred positions from other your, your facilities? Are these going to be transferred from other doctors or dentists or mental health professionals from Wheat Ridge? How do you intend to staff this, I guess? Where would they come from?
Yes, to all of those. This will represent a addition to our system, but we will be bringing experienced staff in to launch the program. But then, of course, we will be hiring additional staff as we grow and phase in the program. So, on day one, I would anticipate four to five medical providers, one to two dentists. Within a year or two, I would see as up to the full complement of medical providers and dental providers.
Great, thank you. And then, Ms. Root, I do have a question for you, please. We have a letter dated May 26th, I guess, the, the narrative letter. At the end of the second paragraph, you put, "There would also be a small garage to house a mobile dental van."
Ah, yes.
Can you address that?
That has since gone away from the program.
Okay. Thank you. And then, just a quick question about the wellhouse. The reasoning for why you want to keep that, and do you intend to, I guess, just a little bit of correction on that?
Sure. So, so we have some legal documents that were provided by the property seller, who had done some research around what that wellhouse provides to the property and what value it might have, material value it might have to the site. And it turns out, the research has revealed that the way the laws work in Colorado is that that well is not permitted at the moment. It is, its use is simply grandfathered. And so, provided MCPN were to continue to use that wellhouse as in its current, like, historic use, which was for irrigation only, then, then they may continue to do so. Now, if we make any modifications to the well, in other words, we redrill or, or, you know, try to move it, or, or, the way the language reads, it says, "Make any modifications," then we would need to go through the well permitting process, which I think would be prohibitively expensive. And so, we probably would at that point abandon that, which, which would be, which would be a loss for our client. So, we definitely want to preserve that, and I think Meredith made a good point, too, that I think people, people that know the history of the site, see the wellhouse and, and, you know, kind of remember what was there, and that that's not such a bad thing. So, so we definitely want to try to preserve that for a number of reasons.
Great. Thank you.
George? Okay. What else? I, I had some questions initially about the orientation, sort of the, the orientation of the, the main entrance facing away from Wadsworth, but I think you've, you've satisfied my curiosity about that. I can see how it's better therapeutically for your patients to have that view as opposed to the view of Wadsworth. And also, probably better for the surrounding community, just in terms of what, what the neighbors are going to see over their back fence in terms of trees, landscaping, and architecture. So, so you've answered all my questions. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Meredith, do we have, I'm not going to ask a stupid question. Of course, we've got, I see all of you wonderful people here, so I know we've got people who want to say something. Great. Thank you. Okay. So, we've got a list that you guys, that the public who wishes to state their, being in favor or opposed to, to the case we have in front of us tonight. I'm just going to go down this in order. I would like to say, we'll, we'll call you up one at a time. If you can address your comments to us, the commission members, we'll take your comments into consideration and ask staff or the applicant questions as appropriate. And if you find, as, as you're listening to your fellow citizens and neighbors speak, if you find that they're, they're eloquently stating your case for you, don't feel obligated to come up and, and say, you know, say the same thing, if you'd like to, however. I'm certainly, I'd certainly love to hear it. So, let's start with Don Edlin. If you can just state your name and address for the record, and...
Don Edlin. Yeah, I live at 2935 Webster. I've just got a couple of questions that, and a couple of points. On the detention pond that your, their cities want to put in there, how is that going to be sized? Most of the time, we don't have that much water. This last month or two, we've seen quite a bit. So, I was curious about that. And also, what about mosquito control, stuff like this? Is there any plans being made for that? That pond's going to end up right behind some of our homes, and while I have no real objection to it, I don't want to see a mosquito breeding area out there. At the original meeting that the people had over there at the recreation center, they were, there was talk about a fence along the east side of that property, between our backyards and stuff. I haven't heard anything about that. I just wanted to make sure whether that was still being planned. The, you're talking about moving the bus stop from 29th and Wadsworth and moving it a little bit further north. With the 20-foot setback and the 30-foot easement that you're talking about, will there be some way of doing a setback for the buses to get out of the lane of traffic on Wadsworth? Or would that be feasible? I mean, it seemed like when buses have to stop in traffic, it really can mess things up, and they're, you know, if, if they can do a setback at the same time, it might be very convenient. And the other thing, pushing 30th through, I'm going to assume that you're going to put a stop sign at the western end of that. And you're referring to a three-quarter turn versus right in, right out. I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs of what you were talking about, but I can tell you, anybody sitting there on that 30th trying to turn south onto Wadsworth at certain parts of the day, you're going to have a mess. And you were talking about for accident prevention and stuff. I, I see a possibility there, a strong possibility, because you're going to have cars trying to do, go south out there coming across three lanes of traffic. I don't think it'd be feasible to put a stoplight up there. I don't think anybody'd suggest that, but just putting a stop sign up there and putting, letting people make a left turn out of there, right in, right out, and putting in a right turn lane off of Wadsworth, so they've got a little way to get in there. And the people that are going to live on the north side of that 30th, maybe there could be some kind of a fence or hedges or something put up there to kind of break it up. They've, it's going to be quite an inconvenience to them. And has anybody looked at the western end there where the 30th would tie into Wadsworth? You also have an entrance into those duplexes right to the north there. Someone might want to look at that, because you're going to have a traffic doing two or three different things at one time in one spot there. Basically, that's it. Other, after all that kicking, I do want to say that I am in favor of this. Lord knows, we fought hard enough to keep that strip mall out of there, and I think this is probably one of the best uses that you're going to come up with for it. So, I'm for it.
Great. Thanks for your comments. All right. Next on our list, forgive me if I mispronounce any names. I'm really bad at reading handwriting. Lon or Lauren Adelin?
My name is Janet.
Okay. And then there's Janet. Okay. Okay. All right. Ella Mayers, West 29th Avenue?
Hi.
Okay. That's fine. Katie in Blue Heart Cup? Hi.
I'm Blue Heart Cup, and this is my wife, Katie. We live at 3190 Wadsworth. We're right in the corner in that old Tudor house over there. I think one of our comments would just be as far as access, if 30th does come through, access to that frontage road. We find a lot of times that that's really our only way to get into, to our house is through there. While there are turnoffs, because we don't have an access to 32nd from our corner property, that's the only way we can get into...
Our home.
Into our home. So, just like that taken into consideration.
And I was wondering about some of the other medical facilities in Wheat Ridge and how this will actually impact that. I walk the neighborhoods quite a bit, and I'm all in favor of the pedestrian access and more sidewalks, but I have noticed over by Lutheran and behind Safeway, there's a lot of medical buildings that currently have vacancies and space available. And if we truly need more doctors in the area, why aren't they moving into those facilities? And if this facility does open, will the facilities that are around just become dilapidated and once more give us more problem areas in Wheat Ridge? I think that's all the questions we have at this time.
Okay. Great. Thanks for your comments. Susanna Wilson, would you like to, would you like to speak? Okay. Okay. Yes, I see here you're in favor. Donald Wilson? Same?
I'm in favor, but I'm not convinced opening up 30th.
Okay.
And the whole neighborhood, I'll speak to them. They don't like me.
Would you, would you like to come up and, and just state that, or is there more you'd want to say?
Is that good enough?
I think that's fine.
Because we already have a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood, and we don't need all, all people going up and down the side of the park. There's a lot of people who go to, to, to Park already, and we don't need any more people going up and down the streets.
And did you, and did you get it?
Your ideas?
Okay. And you're at 2915 Webster. Okay. Christian Muselli, Musilli, pardon me.
I'd like to just make a point. Instead of opening 38th, I meant 30th, would it be, if you can look into how easy it would be to access this building from 32nd and 29th? Because that has a light to turn, and if you made a right turn lane to turn into that building, I would like you to consider it. I ride my bike a lot, and that traffic, where 30th is right now, there's not a lot of traffic, and I'm just wondering if there would be more traffic coming in that way because of 30th opening. Yeah. I'm in favor of the building. I really think it's a great opportunity for people to get the services they need. So, that's what I was wondering.
Great.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for your comments. Pat Musilli?
I think, I, I live on Webster Street also, across the street from a lot of these people that are going to back up to that property. I think what people are worried about is that 30th being pushed through, just because of more traffic. I can tell you the traffic count is nearly zero. There's no cars going down there right now. For the safety sake, probably, would probably be safer if you guys got away from that. I know the city's pushing to have that open for some reason. Why, I don't know. It may be more convenient for, for you guys not to have people coming in left and right on Wadsworth, southbound and northbound. I don't get why you have to bring traffic through our neighborhood. It just doesn't make sense. Keep them away. You know, really, we don't need them. Maybe do something in the corner there. Instead of bringing 30th all the way through, chop it off maybe halfway or something and let them... let them build something for these folks over there so that they can get into their property, which is, makes a lot of sense. And gets into the corner of this property, this new proposed property, chop it off so no traffic can go towards the neighborhoods. Maybe use a street light there or something to get people in and out from the south and the north, and forget about coming through. Just makes more sense. I don't think it'll cost much more either, especially for the taxpayers, you guys, you know, we don't really want to have to pay for a street that we don't need. Thank you.
And, sorry, Mr. Muselli, you're at 2940 Webster as well, right? Okay. Sorry, we're just getting all this so we can have it for the record. Thanks. Margaret Baumann, would you like to speak? If you can come up and give us your name and your address, please.
Margaret Baumann, 3005 Vance. I'm on the corner of 30th and Vance, and if this 30th goes through, there are only two streets that go through to 32nd from ours. One is Webster, one is Vance. Beyond that, they don't go through until you get, I don't know, some number of streets east. So this is going to bring a lot of more traffic on our two streets, if that street is, if 30th is put through. So I just want you to think about maybe putting just an entrance into the facility, not a through street. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your comments. And I believe I have another Margaret. Margaret M. Baumann, same address? Oh, okay. David Law. Is there David Law here? Would he like to speak? No. Yes, David Law? Oh, yeah. Would you like to speak? Okay. If you can come up and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Dave Law, and I don't live in the neighborhood by our own property, one of the duplexes immediately to the north of the property. So I don't expect my opinion to carry the weight of the people that actually live in the neighborhood. I don't have any objections to the facility. I think we need those kinds of facilities. But I am concerned about the increase in traffic if 30th is put through to Wadsworth. I'm concerned about the people I rent to there. I'm concerned about an increase of traffic there affecting their quality of life. And that's the only opinion I have about that.
Okay.
And so, I don't live in the neighborhood, but the property is 3010 Wadsworth Boulevard.
Okay. And you're at 1045 Cody and Lakewood?
Excuse me?
You're at 1045 Cody and Lakewood?
Yeah.
Hello, good evening. Ted Hyde, planning and technical consultant for Live Well Wheat Ridge. Members of the commission, thank you for your consideration of my comments tonight. I did want to say that Live Well Wheat Ridge has reviewed the most recent iteration of the site plan, and we did submit comments to Boulder Associates, with a focus primarily on multimodal circulation, both within the site and to and from the site for adjacent, for, excuse me, for employees, clients, and other visitors. And to the representatives here tonight from MCPN, as well as Boulder Associates, we very much appreciate the opportunity to complete the review, and thank you for consideration of our comments. Tonight, on behalf of Live Well Wheat Ridge, I'd just like to offer some comments in support of the project overall. First, from a medical services standpoint, MCPN at 29th and Wadsworth would serve as an important safety net here in the community of Wheat Ridge. Given their expertise and proven ability to serve clients, really with a wide range of needs and resources, they really are in a unique position to address the needs of the most underserved here in Wheat Ridge. Looking at the most recent demographic data about the citizenry here in Wheat Ridge, the number of residents who are over the age of 65, there really is a need that MCPN would fulfill. Second, MCPN is known for really serving as part of a larger collaboration and partnership throughout the Denver metro area, specifically here in the west metro area, and allowing them to set up shop across the street would really foster that important medical services partnership. So that's another reason we support. Third, it's reasonable to foresee that both in the short term and in the long term, the project would create jobs for Wheat Ridge residents, which is a good thing. Fourth, it is my subjective opinion, but I do feel that over many of the existing conditions on the site, that the project would be an aesthetic improvement to the environment and the corridor along this portion of Wadsworth. The only suggestion I would make in terms of an enhancement, and I don't ask that this be placed as a condition upon the applicant, there's certainly financing enough improvements as proposed, but that in the future, the city consider improving the crosswalk condition between the southern portion of the site and what is a great amenity right outside these doors in Hayward Park. There currently is no indication of a crosswalk of any kind, and just so Meredith and Mr. Parento ask you to consider in the future possibly implementing a crosswalk at that location, again, for employees, clients, customers, et cetera. Overall, thank you very much for your consideration, and Live Well Wheat Ridge does support the project.
Mr. Hyde, we have just a couple of questions for you.
Yeah, please.
And?
Since you mentioned multimodal, do you have any idea how many patients will be coming via bus?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if you have stats on the number of your clients that typically access your facilities by bus.
This is my best guess. I have no statistics on it, but I would say probably about 20 to 30 percent.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Dick?
Yeah, Mr. Hyde, are you prepared to make a comment on pushing 30th Avenue through?
Good question. What do you guys think? I, that is not an issue. I've looked at closely as part of my review. This sounds very much like an answer out of Washington DC, but I can see both sides. I think the residents, most importantly, have made some very valid concerns, raised some very valid concerns about the continuation of that street. I have to say, if I were living in that neighborhood, I think I would probably feel the same way. However, both Meredith and Mr. Parento have daylighted reasons why the city is interested in that continuation. It's not my decision to make. I think both sides have made valid points.
Are there questions?
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I put you on the spot.
All right. All right, thanks, Mr. Hyde. Marta Wood, or Marco Wood, sorry. Marta, thank you. I apologize.
My name is Marta Wood. I live at, ooh, the address is new. What's my address?
7385 West 29th Avenue.
Yes, 7385 29th. I live south of the property, and as I said, we haven't lived there very long. I have three points I'd like to make. I share concern with this woman about vacancy rates in other medical facilities around town and the added competition to fill those. I don't want to, I don't want to create more problems with a facility that we may not need, although we do need something on that corner. Being south, right across the street from the drainage pond, and having lived in our new home through the summer and suffering the drainage that we have experienced already, I'm a little concerned about melting snow moving south. Hayward Park on the east is a drainage pond in itself after all these rains. We wash it every day. And I'm just a little nervous about another big drainage pond. My third concern has to do with expansion in the future, 10, 15 years. I have Kaiser Insurance, and they're always expanding their facilities. And it doesn't appear that there's very much room, without really infringing on the parking lot, very much room to expand. That may not be a problem, but I just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Stefan Wilson?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bill Logan. I'm not a resident here, but I work across the street at Olinger Crown Hill and have been associated with Ollingers for many years. The address there is 7777 West 29th Avenue. We're really excited about the opportunity for this organization to be here. I'm familiar with the organization, so I certainly approve. I certainly can understand the 30th Avenue dilemma. What I would really encourage, and myself, I mean, worked at the old Olinger facility for years, trying to get in there off of Wadsworth was life-threatening with Wadsworth moving like it does. So whether it's 30th or whether it's Wadsworth, including the bus, the bus stop as well, if there can be a D-Saw lane, because it sounds like maybe there is room for that, so that people that are turning or the buses pulling over can get out of the traffic, because as you all know, Wadsworth really, really moves. So I'm glad that, hopefully, Metro provider will be here, and we'll look forward to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. As somebody who's actually worked in that physical spot, it's nice to hear your comments regarding traffic.
Yeah, it, anyway, it's sad that it's gone, but it certainly was our business decision many years ago to let go of that property. And it was, anyway, it is where it is now, but it sounds like it's gonna be a nice, handsome building there, so.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Jack Anderson?
Thank you very much. I think I signed the wrong list. My name is Jack Anderson, and I live at 3120 Webster. And my concerns are on the north side, but as a preface to that, how many entrances are there to this property under the present plan?
There are two entrances, one on 29th and one on 30th at Webster.
One on 29th and one on 30th?
Yeah, well, that's what's in the plan right now.
There is no entrance from Wadsworth?
Meredith?
Do you mean right now, or when the property was used before?
No. Under this present plan for this medical-
Right.
I mean, how many ways can they come in to avail their services?
Two. One from 29th and one from 30th. There's no access proposed to Wadsworth.
Well, now, where is the one from 30th? Right at the end of our street?
Yep, it aligns opposite Webster.
Well, all right, now, you referred earlier to a pedestrian entrance at some time up on 30th. Is that correct?
One of the requirements is for installation of sidewalk, and that would extend to that eastern property line along 30th.
Well, I don't understand your answer. Is there a pedestrian entrance plan on the north side of the property from 30th?
There is a sidewalk, yes. There would be pedestrian access.
All right, now, the entrance on 30th is right at the end of our street then, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Right, it would basically be a four-way intersection of Webster, 30th, and the entrance to the facility.
Well, wouldn't this create a very substantial increase in traffic on Webster?
That's a good question that we can ask when we address all these questions to staff and the applicant. I believe in the presentation, they indicated there would be no significant increase in neighborhood traffic.
You know, our Webster Street is relatively unique. I mean, we're only one block from Wadsworth, but we're really, I mean, isolated from the rush of Wadsworth as a multi-lane street. We have very little traffic on it. If we, if we end up with the main entrance to this structure at the end of our street at 30th, well, we're gonna have a substantial amount of traffic on Webster. We're gonna have people parking on Webster, and I don't know how many parking places they're planned for in the, inside the plot, but this is a substantial, I guess, intrusion on integrity of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our last comments are listed is Catherine Snyder. And don't worry, if you didn't sign and you want to make a comment, I'll give everybody that option to make one last comment after. Miss Snyder here. Hi, can you give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Catherine Snyder. I live at 2995 Webster Street, right on the corner of 30th and Webster. I can't even begin to express my concern about this street going through, the fact that we've been assured over and over and over and over again that this was not gonna We fought this from the very beginning. We are, we have two main thoroughfares into our neighborhood already, between 29th and 32nd. Anytime anything happens on 29th, we get all the traffic diverted to avoid the accident, even the city buses. And now we're gonna have another street coming into our neighborhood. This is a two-block area. I don't see the value of a third thoroughfare from Webster to Wadsworth. If they need an area to come off of Wadsworth, could they make it a partial access so that the traffic could not go east on 30th to Webster? Because this is gonna create problems at 29th and Webster for people that want to go south. It's gonna create problems at 30th and Wadsworth for people that want to go south. Wadsworth is already so busy that it can't really accommodate the cars, the traffic, the buses, and everything else without access lanes. And I, it's beyond me how anybody would want more access to our neighborhood. It seems to be very accessible, the way it is now. I approve this project. I appreciate the effort that has gone in with everyone working on getting something in here that is, leaves our neighborhood open to family activities on evenings and weekends, something that's centering further down toward the south end and to the west end, which gives us more privacy as homeowners in our backyard. I agree with the gentleman about, we haven't heard about the fence, but I stress to you that you have no idea, without living there, being there, what kind of turmoil this could cause in our neighborhood to put that street through. And I think it would also become more of a hangout for people that could go up and down 30th. We already have a serious problem with people that are using the very east end of that property for their social activities. And I think the more people that can get in and out of there easily, the more of a problem we're gonna have. Please give this your- If it was your neighborhood, how would you feel? And remember, this has been a residential neighborhood for a long, long time, much, much longer than it's been considered valuable commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Great, come on up, please, give us your name and your address.
My name is Rene Bergstrom and I live at 3025 Vance Street. And I appreciate having a time to share my questions or my concerns, given that I was late for the meeting, so I appreciate that. We moved into the neighborhood about 10 years ago, and over the last four years, what we have seen in our neighborhood is an influx of young families. And we're really excited about that. I have a 10-year-old and a six-year-old in my home. There are three other families on that Vance Street that have young children. There are two other families on Webster, between 30th and 32nd, that have moved in with very young children. We're excited about that because we believe in the revitalization of Wheat Ridge. I have a lot, my kids go to school in Denver because my husband works in the Denver School District. And there are a lot of people I know in northwest Denver that have realized what Wheat Ridge has to offer. So I'm seeing a lot of people moving into the area, which excites me. My concern with regards to this property are twofold. The first one is in relation to the sound of traffic. It seems like there, now that the property has been demolished, it's much noisier where we live. And I was hoping that the structure would be built closer to the residential area so that it could absorb more of the sound from the traffic on Wadsworth. With that said, you know, I don't have all the information, so I, and I'm not a planner. But the other thing is in relation to the traffic coming into the residential area. As a mother of young children, I go to a lot of different facilities and I've gotten lost many times. In fact, I was just at the Denver Tech Center this morning and spent about 15 minutes trying to figure out how to get into an office. The points I'd like to make are that 32nd is much busier than 29th. So if MapQuest decides to give directions to this facility from either the east or the west or north side, I would not be surprised if they suggested that you turn on 32nd and go down Webster to the facility. If you're coming from Denver, you would, most people prefer 32nd over 29th. So they would, if I were them, I would go down Webster because I would avoid the traffic on Wadsworth. If I was coming from the north, the 29th light is much more unpredictable than 32nd, so people don't like to stop on the 29th light because they can oftentimes end up waiting quite a long time. So I would see people wanting to stop and turn on 32nd and go down Webster. It would be very dangerous to try and cross all the lanes of traffic on a full 30th going to Wadsworth. And I could see people who are lost trying to figure out how to get into the parking lot. With that said, if you came up from the south and you missed the entrance on 29th, which often happens when you're trying to find a new location, it seems to me it would make more sense to have an entrance directly into the parking lot because you get a chance to recover without hitting another light and trying to figure out how to get back to the building. So I think I've covered everything. I'm very excited about the facility and the growth that I'm seeing in Wheat Ridge. I'm just a little bit concerned about the safety of the residence since that is a residential area and my concern about increased traffic on Webster. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, come on up and give us your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Laura and I'm on 2935 Webster.
Could you give us your last name, please?
Edlin, E-D-E-L-I-N. And I'd just like to say I am 100% with you people. I am very excited and I welcome you into the neighborhood. And I would like to also say I am very against the 30th road going through. I don't see there's a point in putting it in there. It is also a waste of taxpayers' money and it should not be going through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, would you like to make an additional comment?
I'd like to give a little information.
Can you come up to the mic, please? Thanks, just so we can all hear you.
I'm still Don Edlin. Look, I still live at 2920 Webster. I would, before you make a final determination on the 30th Street, I've been sitting back there and Mr. Lowe, when he was talking about the duplexes, we used to live a long time ago in one of them duplexes. And it seems to me that on the south end of those duplexes where the 30th Street easement is at, on a fairly regular basis, they used to develop large pools of water if there was heavy snow or heavy rains. And I'm wanting to say, I would like to check with my father-in-law, but I believe there is a old drainage ditch that runs along that 30th Street easement on the north side of And I'm getting old and I might be misremembering, but my father-in-law, my in-laws live right there. And it seemed to me that there was, just on the south side of their fence, a small drainage ditch that ran along there. I think it was for water control. And I, I don't know whether you might be able to check it through city records or something, but that would be something, if you're going to pave that area and level it out, you might need to look at water control on that.
Okay, great. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else before we close the, okay.
Thank you.
Hi.
I was just wondering if we had any information about whether the utilities will be going underground for this development. We have, all of the telephone poles are on our property just on the other side of the fence, and I know there's some sort of a right-of-way there for utilities, but in these modern times, they seem to be putting most everything underground when the opportunity presents itself. And I'd like to know if that's been addressed in this case.
Okay, great, thanks. I think that's going to do it for the public part of our hearing. So do we do that after we close? No, okay, all right, sorry. I'm a newbie when it comes to being a chair, so I have to talk to the master here. All right, questions for staff or applicants based on comments and thoughts? Oh, by the way, before we go, I'd just like to thank all of you in the public who came tonight and who had comments or who expressed your approval or opposition to this. I really appreciate all of your comments, the whole commission does, and we take your comments very seriously. So with that said, anything from the commission? Dick?
Just a few questions for the applicant. Can you address the undergrounding of utilities issue, the fence issue, and the detention pond issue? And then I would like to have Meredith get up here. I think I understand what a three-quarter intersection is, but I would like to have that presented to the rest of the people and the people that are watching at home what a three-quarter intersection is. Okay.
My name is Alex Aronello. I'm with LSC Transportation Consultants and we did the traffic study. We did not suggest putting 30th through, but that was at the direction of staff, and I think it's an idea that is a generally accepted principle to try to have greater connectivity between neighborhoods. I want to give you some traffic numbers from our report and talk about the access on Wadsworth. On Wadsworth, CDOT, the state's going to determine whether it's going to be a three-quarter or right-in, right-out access. And certainly when we heard that this was what the city wanted to do, we felt since it was a public street, you probably wanted as much access as possible. We don't think you're going to get a full movement access, which means you can turn in all directions. The only way you could get that is probably with a traffic light, but the traffic numbers are not going to warrant a traffic signal, so that's not going to be a possibility. So CDOT's going to look at restrictions on the access. We felt that three-quarters would be a possibility. Certainly, it's not a certainty. I mean, CDOT may say, no, it's, they may want to restrict that, or if the city wants to go that route, that certainly, I think, CDOT would support a right-in, right-out access. A three-quarter access means that lefts out of the access are restricted, so you can make lefts in. So southbound on Wadsworth, you can turn, southbound from Wadsworth into 30th. You couldn't make the left out from 30th going south on Wadsworth. That movement would be restricted. That movement's always the most dangerous when you're turning from a low-volume, minor street onto a high-volume arterial. That's a very dangerous movement because you're looking in both directions, you need gaps in both directions, and it's a very dangerous thing if you get hit crossing, you know, a major traffic stream like that. So that's probably the movement that they would be restricted. So are you clear on the three-quarter movement? We would restrict lefts out from 30th going south on Wadsworth. And the way we would do that is either some sort of pork chop island on Wadsworth or on 30th to restrict that movement. Now, let's, you have any questions about that, about how that works? But we would apply to CDOT, they would want to see our traffic numbers and they would make a ruling whether it makes some sense. Now, three-quarter makes sense for me because the lefts out, you're going southbound, so you can go south to 29th internally on the site, go to the 29th traffic signal on Wadsworth and make the left there, so you're not really going out of direction by restricting that left turn out, because you have another way to get to a traffic signal. Now, the left in makes a lot more sense to me because that cuts down on travel. You can come from Wadsworth, turn left onto 30th and get into the site. If you can't, if it's just right-in, right-out and you can't make that left in, then you have to go all the way down to 29th, go up 29th, and then backtrack up to the site. So you're going out of direction by not being able to turn left into 30th. And so CDOT will look at the traffic numbers and the out-of-direction travel and the possibilities of accidents on Wadsworth and making that determination. Okay? Some of the traffic numbers, we looked at putting the access on 30th and what that would do. Now, we're opening up several different paths now. The neighborhood now can get out to Wadsworth in a direction that they couldn't before. So we looked at that traffic. We looked at, we figured, counted up, there were about 75 homes in the area of Webster and 32nd and, between 32nd and 29th, what homes could possibly use this access? And so we assigned some of that traffic to this, to 30th, and we figured about 300 vehicles per day from the neighborhood would go out to Wadsworth using 30th, about 300. Coming in, the traffic that would be using 30th to come into the site or leave the site on 30th would be about 600. So about 600 from the site, about 300 from the neighborhood, so you'd have a total of about 900 on 30th between the access and Wadsworth. In that particular stretch, there would be about 900 vehicles per day. Okay? What does that mean in terms of traffic? Okay? In the morning, you'd have about 30 vehicles coming into the site on 30th, into the site, 30 vehicles. So that's one vehicle every two minutes. Okay? In the evening, you'd have about 46 vehicles leaving the site, so it's almost one vehicle per minute on 30th. Now, how many vehicles would end up on Webster? That's been a big issue, everybody's concerned about Webster. My guess was about 5% of the total traffic to the site would use, end up using Webster. And that would end up being about 85 vehicles per day, 45 one way, 45 the other. During the peak hour, you'd have about six vehicles coming in, about two vehicles leaving on Webster. So it's one vehicle every 10 minutes using Webster. Now, again, that 5%, you know, maybe low, maybe 10, 15%, it's not going to be half of the traffic for the site using Webster. It's going to be a certain percentage. And so you'd have to guess, but you're talking about one vehicle every 10 minutes, so you double that, one vehicle every five minutes, you know, on Webster. So just to give you a feel of the type of traffic that we're talking about. Again, you have Webster and you have Vance, the traffic could be split. Will people know how to, you know, get in and out of that neighborhood using those streets? And that was why I guessed that 5% using Webster to access the site. Any other questions I can answer on that?
Thank you. That was a better answer than my question.
Steve's got a question for you.
Follow-up to that, I'm sorry. What are you proposing to be the ratio or the percentage split between the people using the 29th Avenue entrance and exit versus the 30th Avenue exit?
It's about, my distribution was about 45% would be coming in on 29th from Wadsworth, about 10% from the east on 29th. And then I had about 40% coming from the north on Wadsworth and about 5% coming from 32nd.
So basically a 55, 45 split between the two entrances, so almost equal. Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up to that, so that assumes a left-hand turn would be allowed on southbound Wadsworth onto 30th Avenue by CDOT? Okay.
I have a question.
Anne's got a question for you.
So one of the residents brought up a good point, and I don't know if this has affected traffic engineering, but the use of MapQuest, Google, et cetera, and how the directions, how directions are provided by those tools?
By MapQuest?
Yeah. So has that affected your traffic engineering plans as you, because they usually try to figure out the fastest, quickest way?
Usually not, and sometimes you're not very good, but.
I agree, I agree, but it was a really good point. I mean, is there a consideration of tools like that and how they provide direction and does that affect your numbers? Or?
We don't normally do it on a study like this. We won't know how they would assign it. But we look at the street network and we look at what traffic signals, speed limits, things of that nature, and deciding the distribution of traffic. And in this case, you know, that was my guess, and the neighborhood, you know, certainly knows the traffic patterns better than I do, but it's certainly not going to be 50% on Webster, it's not going to be that type of number. It's going to be 5%, it could be as much as 15%. That's my kind of range. And again, you're talking about 85 to 200 or 300 vehicles a day on Webster. Now, what's a, right now Webster probably has 100, 150 vehicles per day. It's not, it's a low-volume road because it's, you know, there's not, just the houses that live along there. So what's, you know, you have a local street, you know, 500 to 800 vehicles per day is not, is a fairly low volume on a residential street. They would say any more traffic would be, you know, affect their quality of life, but a typical residential street has, you know, less than 800 vehicles per day, and certainly Webster's not, probably still going to be in that range. It's not going to be a high-volume collector, it's going to be a local residential street with a little more traffic.
One last question. Were you involved when the applicant was originally? Were you involved when the applicant was originally looking and had the layout and the plans for access before the consideration of 30th going through?
I was involved in the original traffic study for previous uses of the property, and then we updated based on this study. And originally, we had, originally, we had an access on Wadsworth, and the city came back and said they wanted 30th put through, and that's how they wanted the access.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it's difficult to get anything from CDOT to allow access directly off of Wadsworth, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But in this case, you have a major facility, and you really want two ways in and out. And you've got to have another way in and out. And you have the 29th. If that gets blocked, you can't get into the site. So you really need another access, and they'll be aware of that and work with you. And 30th, they would love to have, you know, just one access on 30th, Wadsworth. They were going to approve that in the past. So either one of those, they would approve those, either the 30th or an access on Wadsworth.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I've got one last follow-up question. If left turns on southbound Wadsworth were not allowed onto 30th Avenue under your traffic projections, how much of that inbound traffic to the facility that would normally turn onto 30th Avenue from southbound Wadsworth would go down Webster versus going all the way down to 29th and turning into 29th?
Right. That's a danger. If you make it right-in, right-out, I don't know if you're helping Webster or not, because people from the north may go down 32nd and come down Webster. So that's a possibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions? Other questions for staff, applicants?
Dick?
Yes, I still have my question on the undergrounding of utilities and the fence issue. And the detention point.
Sure. So the fence is clearly shown, well, maybe not so clearly on this video up here, but it is shown on the site plan, and we do absolutely intend to provide a fence along the entire east edge of the property. This has been something that we've been talking about at neighborhood meetings all along the way. So that is absolutely something that is shown. As far as undergrounding the utilities, that is not something that has come up as far as comments that we've heard from the city. And I think that's where we stand with that. You know, these designs are pretty preliminary, and we'll see how things go as we go down the road.
And just to add on to Stacy's comment about the utilities, City of Wheat Ridge does not provide electricity, telephone, or any of those types of utilities. In our subregs, it says all new services are supposed to be undergrounded, but I don't know what that does with the existing behind Katie's property.
George?
Actually, for Meredith and Tim, just a couple of the other questions that came up, if we can try to address them. The, I thought I saw on the packet, I want to confirm that, that there is a bus lane proposed, a turnout lane.
Well, the current plan that's drawn shows the bus not, would stop in traffic and not use, could use the D cell lane, but right now, it's not shown to use the D cell lane. Bus stop would be just south of the D cell lane. The RTD does not like bus turnouts because it's very difficult for the bus to get back into traffic, and so they resist at every opportunity having bus turnouts. We try to put them in at all possible when we can, and we also like to put them in D cell lanes. So we would work with the applicant to see if we can cite the bus stop possibly so it can go into the D cell lane. But right now, I think the way it's drawn on the plan, it's showing it just being south of the D cell lane.
There's a question about expansion, future expansion. Can you just explain that process of how that would work or not?
Sure. Well, first of all, what's being proposed tonight is, what would, assuming it is approved eventually by city council, is what would be built on the property to add more square footage on. They would have to come back through a similar type of process that we're doing right now. What makes it a little bit more difficult is they're really stretched as far as having enough parking to meet our standard and also to meet their standards. So if they were to come in and add on, we'd have to find parking somewhere. Structured parking probably isn't an option because of the expense. So it's pretty unlikely that they would be expanding, but not impossible.
Steve?
I have a follow-up for staff, please, regarding the traffic issue. The current zoning that's in place right now looks like there's a, at least on this, a right-in, right-out directly from Wadsworth. Is that, was that permit or access ever approved by CDOT? It was just proposed and?
There's currently two sort of curb cuts into the property, and those were to facilitate the old mortuary and the farmhouse. I'm sure Wadsworth was not a state highway when those structures were built in the early 1900s, and I'm sure that they didn't approve anything back in 1969 when the chapel was built. So they recognize those as existing, but of course, any change of use would require an access permit. So to use either of those.
I'm just wondering from these.
Oh.
From the Italian restaurant, right?
Yes.
It says, "Right-in, right-out intersection per traffic analysis criteria."
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if CDOT ever approved this?
Well, they generally reviewed the plan. They would have had to come through an access permit process, but yes, they definitely were on the referral list.
They give some deference to the local jurisdiction, right? Or do they?
No, they don't.
They do not? So you have, you've reviewed this traffic analysis, right, that the applicant's proposed, I assume?
Yes.
And are you in agreement with their numbers?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't have a preference for 30th and Wadsworth to be a three-quarters or a right-in, right-out?
No. We think the three-quarters would make a lot of sense for the same reasons you heard Mr. Aaron Ello speak. So it makes sense under a traffic review to allow that traffic to come off early. It reduces congestion at the intersection of 29th at that light. So it makes sense to do that. There's a greater chance, according to I and my staff, of getting the three-quarter approved at a city street versus a private drive connection, which would be what is shown on the old plan that was approved and in existence today.
Is there traffic analysis in general state because of, you have a signalized intersection here? CDOT prefers to have additional curb cuts, if you will, further from an existing intersection? Is that standard traffic practice?
Yes. And typically, they're going to want to see if they'll allow one, they'd like to see a right-in, right-out only. So, you know, the, I wouldn't want to give a percent guess at what they will do with the three-quarters, but I would expect they will approve a right-in, right-out, and who knows what their staff might do with the three-quarter application.
Thank you.
George?
I assume at the final development plan, that monument signage or any other signage off on 30th and Wadsworth intersection would be developed in.
Are you speaking right over your public screen? I mean, on the site or city?
Yeah, on the site.
Oh, actually, they did show the location of two monument signs on the plan. Sure. Stacy can show where they are. And then they deferred to the Article 7, which is the sign code.
Yeah. So those are just tentatively shown. I can hardly see myself. But one at this corner here, and then a second one. Where do we have it? Somewhere along this section, and probably right at the corner. I apologize, I can't quite see that screen. But they are shown, and we have, you know, we've looked up the sign code, and we're prepared to do whatever.
Didn't answer the second part. At the time of FDP, we'll want to see size, location, materials.
Yeah. And just actually, we see it, we see it a little bit further east on the plan, right at the turn into the site, adjacent to Webster Street.
Steve?
Another follow-up that was raised. If 30th Avenue were to be constructed, how would that intersection at 30th and Wadsworth interface with the, I guess, that little frontage road that does exist for those duplex? Are you proposing that to connect, or would that be, I guess, left as is?
We're proposing that that connect. It's extremely unsafe for those residents to try to get onto that little frontage road off of Wadsworth. And so we would have some kind of design to allow some minimal access, maybe one-way access, and work something out. It's not been designed, but we really believe that this is one of the benefits to the neighborhood is to try to give those folks a better way to get in and out of their property.
Is that little frontage road, is that CDOT owned and maintained, or city-owned and maintained?
CDOT. CDOT right-of-way and CDOT frontage road.
Okay. Thank you.
So that new access to that frontage road would be off of 30th, the new 30th, then?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Before I do my own? Okay, I've got just a couple of questions. This is for the applicant. Maybe Mr. Myers or Dr. Martin can answer this for me. There were a number of citizens who were concerned about the impact of this facility on vacancy rates or locations of doctors or medical staff and facilities elsewhere in the Wheat Ridge area, and I was wondering if either of you could address that.
It's an interesting question, and sort of falls within the realm of healthcare reform, the industry of healthcare, and why are some aspects of healthcare, the transformation of healthcare that's happening. What I can say is we're a primary care facility. The experience around healthcare reform is that there are not enough primary care facilities to meet the need, not only of Wheat Ridge, but the entire state and the entire nation. There is a shortage of primary care doctors. We have no concerns about not having enough patients who want, who need our services. I will also state that we have been in business since 1989. We have 11 locations. We are very successful in not only our business development, but also the business model that we deliver. And witness our ability to expand, especially in this economy, is a testimony to our strategic planning, our ability to read the tea leaves and the crystal ball.
Okay.
I'd like to just mention a few things. We see that we do have a lot of vacancy with some of the old medical facilities in the city, and that's unfortunate. Part of the issue, at least my take on it, is they don't meet the current needs of today's physicians. The standards are different. That's why Lutheran has done a complete remodels to accommodate kind of the new technology and the new infrastructure that's needed in the medical facilities. So I think that's why we've got a lot of vacant medical space that people don't want. They want fresh, new, that meets today's standards and expectations.
Okay. May I also add on the question of our expansion? It's difficult to imagine expansion at this point. But at least my board has set a strategic plan, and the areas of expansion beyond Wheat Ridge do not include Wheat Ridge. My board has targeted vacant land up in Arvada, which we already own. We own four acres of vacant land in Aurora. And one of the crying needs, as we see in our service area, are the south suburbs. On the east side, we have a 10-acre campus. This will create a strong presence on the west side. We do not have anything equivalent down in the south suburbs, so my board has said that that would be a priority. Once we do that, then who knows? But that's as far as my board can see going forward.
Okay. Thanks very much. All right. Bear with me while I read through my notes. Anybody else have other questions? Okay. Well, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll discuss. Yeah, sure. We have a request for recess? Okay. I don't think I need, I don't need to move for recess. We'll take a, I don't believe I need to move for recess. Do I, Meredith? No. We're going to take a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 9:15. All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. If we could have the commissioners back up and have everyone take a seat, please. Okay, we'll reconvene our meeting and start discussion of the case. Which of our intrepid commissioners would like to start? Ann?
So, I just want to say that I am all for the project. I love the idea of the project. I am 150% for that, and I also want to say I deeply respect city staff and their recommendations and their ideas, but in this case, I'm having a real difficult time with the 30th Avenue punch-through. I'm not having a problem with 30th Avenue connecting at Wadsworth. I really don't have a problem with that because it's already half-dedicated anyway. I like the idea there. And I also like the idea of, because Mr. Pronto explained that that little, the side road that connects the duplexes, that that will actually make it a safer access and, access and exit for them. I like that, and I especially like the fact that that's CDOT because they'll see the value in that. And we'll more likely look at the three-quarter turn suggestion because of that little road. However, I'm having serious heartache punching this through to Webster and to the east. So, I feel like Solomon up here. I love the idea. I'm having problems with the punch-through, okay? The only other thing that I didn't hear covered, and I guess we can't hear from staff anymore, is about the detention pond, but we do a really good job in detention ponds in Wheat Ridge. So, I have, and especially since it'd be across the street from the city, I'm sure that it'll be managed appropriately and designed correctly, so I don't have concerns about that. I have concerns about the 30th Avenue, or, yeah, 30th Avenue punching all the way through, but I do like the access from Wadsworth versus just a random cut-in from Wadsworth, as was suggested for the earlier proposals.
Dick?
I would like to echo Ann's comments. My one concern about not punching it all the way through to Webster is, for the people that have the access along Wadsworth, the Wadsworth access lane, that would probably encourage them to do a cut-through, come in off of 29th, cut through the applicant's property, and then dump right out on, onto their access road. But in the balance, I still think that that is probably the best situation, and if there is a motion made that would include not punching 30th through, I would vote in favor of it.
Well, I also want to thank everyone, members of the, of the public, the applicant and the city. In looking at the, in looking at the reasons for the 30th Avenue connection, I understand and agree with almost every single one of them, other than the grid connectivity, which doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense because of the low number of streets that are in that area. So, it doesn't seem to me like that connectivity is important. However, the other issues raised, multimodal transportation, new trail improvements, pedestrian access, I think those are all still able to be accomplished at 30th Avenue as an entry point to the site without making a full connection. So, I feel like that's a reasonable compromise in this situation to actually allow for a good access point on the north side of the applicant's site, as well as hit all of the, or most of, 90% of the points that were raised by, by the city. So, you know, I also am very much in favor of the, of the project, the improvement to the property, the commitment to green building, attractive green building on the site, and economic development. So, I will support this if, if we can consider, consider an adjustment to the, to the 30th Avenue connection.
Scott?
I just, I'll be short. I also support Ann's comment.
Steve, did you have anything to add? Okay. All right, I'll be the last to speak on this before we start motioning and whatnot. I'd like to commend the applicant for their dedication to creating a, a plan for the site that's attractive, useful, beneficial to the community. And frankly, just on a personal note, I'm glad you guys are trying to save some of those trees. Those are, those are big trees. I was sad to see a lot of those original structures go. I'm sure a lot of us were, but, you know, they're gone. It's nice to see that some of those trees are going to stay. I think it's going to help retain a little bit of that forested rural-ish character. You know, I love the, the idea of the green building. And as far as the grid goes, you know, I understand city council and, and planning staff's goals in, in creating a grid, but, you know, if you look at that part of Wheat Ridge, I'm looking down because I have this map of like the entire city here, and if you look at where all these grids are, there's really not much of, I mean, there's sort of a grid there. I don't know. It's, it seems like trying to bust 30th all the way through is trying to encourage a grid where really the, the character of that neighborhood is not necessarily grid-oriented. So, you know, I would, I would, I would support, I see the point of having an access point, not directly on Wadsworth, but off of a 30th Street oriented access, but I don't see necessarily the need to take it all the way through to Webster. With that, I'll be quiet now. I'll entertain motions, if there are motions, if there's no further discussion.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ 1104, a request for a planned commercial development, specific outline development plan for property located at 7495 West 29th Avenue for the following reasons. One, due to changed market conditions, the property is no longer appropriate for retail. Two, the proposed specific ODP is consistent with the Wadsworth subarea plan and envision Wheat Ridge. Three, the proposed site design and architectural elevations are consistent with the commercial industrial design standards in the architectural and site design manual. Four, the zone change evaluation criteria support approval of this request. Five, with modifications recommended by staff, all requirements of an outline development plan have been met, which will allow administrative approval of FDPs for the property with the following conditions. One, problems with legal description be resolved prior to first reading. Two, the applicant continue working with Public Works to resolve drainage design on, on the site. Three, the proposed materials and colors be specified on the architectural elevations where they are not indicated. A sample board to be provided prior to city council public hearing. Four, on a sheet, on sheet A4, the graphic be modified to show a detached sidewalk along the entire length of West 29th Avenue. And five, redesign the 30th Avenue access to provide entrance to the north side of the site without connecting to Webster.
Second? Is there a second? Second, okay. Any further discussion? Ann?
This might be a little overage. I had talked about overnight storage on the property. Is that even, anybody, anybody even concerned about it besides me? If not, I'm fine.
I'm not terribly concerned. I think that might be an issue for, for management and code enforcement and the police and whatnot.
Fair enough, I'll let it go. That's fine.
Steve, anything? Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the motion.
And that motion passes unanimously.
All right. Again, I'd like to thank the applicant, city staff, and the public for their time regarding this case. We'll move on to other items. We have the 38th Avenue Quarter Plan update.
Which I don't believe anything was put in the packet, but I would like you to know that we have our next public meeting coming up on August 3rd, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Rec Center. So, that's the third and final public meeting for the 38th Avenue Quarter Plan. What?
Okay.
The stakeholder, the stakeholder meeting's coming up too, right? I put it in my calendar.
Yes, I believe that is next.
Next week.
You know what? It's next Thursday because I've got Board of Adjustments training and half of staff are coming to that and half are going to stakeholders' meeting, but the public meeting is the ninth.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I might try and make that, that meeting to see what everyone has to say. It'd be interesting. All right, if there's no other news, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you. Vote.
She didn't get it, but yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.